Okay, awesome. Hi guys, so my name is Olivia. And I wanted to start making these little videos for girls who either can't make it out to my weekly Bible study, or on days like this where the weather prevents us from meeting together. And also just for girls who maybe don't feel comfortable coming yet, or even for people in the internet who want to watch these, hi, welcome. So normally at my house, I have a girls' Bible study. This is definitely geared toward girls, but it doesn't mean that guys are prohibited from watching it or anything. But basically, I have one every week at my house, and I would love to do a little mini Bible study here. And just provide more of an accessibility to people who can't make it out, or just kind of want like an online little Bible study to follow, maybe need some guidance over what to read or anything. So yeah, welcome. So I suggest going to be somewhere where it's gonna be quiet and put your phone away, put your computer away. Just kind of try to eliminate any distractions that are going to cause you to not be able to fully understand the Word, or read it, or fully focus on it. And I suggest, you know, lighting some candles and just like, I don't know, just making it a nice atmosphere. I think that, you know, there's definitely a verse that says, "Go and be alone with God," and "Shut your door to your room and just be alone with God." So I know that God really, really loves when we just come to Him without any distractions and just want to learn more about Him. And also, I wanted to say, the goal of the Bible study that I have, number one is to spread the good news of the gospel of Jesus Christ. And the second goal is to just make girls feel very comfortable and welcome somewhere, and give them a sense of community, and just provide them friends, provide them a safe place where they can share how they feel, and where they can share doubts and fears and questions, and not feel condemned or judged by anyone. So I just wrote a few verses down, which Bible study over the summer, one of them caused me to start doing this rather than writing out notes. I've just kind of started to write down verses, and we're just gonna kind of go with whatever the Lord wants me to speak. And yeah, there was one summer Bible study where we were outside, and it was the first time I had done this. I had up until, I've had this Bible study for about a year, and I think it was the first time that I had ever just kind of let God lead the whole thing. Like, I just wrote down some verses, and I said, "Let just lead it the way you want to lead it." And He did some really cool things that night, and it was just kind of like showing me to let go of my own pride, my own control, and just let God like tell you. So, we're gonna go to the book of 1 John, and that's toward the very back, it's right after 2 Peter. We're gonna go to 1 John, chapter 1. Alrighty, so 1 John, chapter 1, we're gonna read from verse 5 to verse 7. Okay, verse 5 says, oh, sorry, I'm gonna pray really quick. "Lord God, I pray for this little online Bible study that we're doing right now. I pray for whoever is watching, Lord God, I pray that you comfort them, help them in any kind of struggle or trial that they're going through, whether they're in a time of peace or a time of trial. Just bless them wherever they are, Father God, and draw them closer to you. Show them that you are the only one who matters, Father. You are worthy of our praise. In Christ we pray. Amen." Okay, 1 John, chapter 1, verse 5, it's entitled "Walking in the Light," and this is the NIV, by the way. "This is the message we have heard from Him and declared to you. God is light, and in Him there is no darkness at all. If we claim to have fellowship with Him, yet walk in the darkness, we lie and do not live by the truth." Verse 7, "But if we walk in the light as He is in the light, we have fellowship with one another, and the blood of Jesus, His Son, purifies us from all sin." So God calls us to walk in the light. And I think that, you know, the Bible warns a lot about lukewarm, this is kind of a side comment, but lukewarm Christians. Now, what exactly is lukewarm? And I have a great book called Crazy Love by Francis Chan, I think you should read. There's a chapter that says, you know, "The Profile of the Lukewarm." And really, Francis Chan worries more about the people in the church who are claiming to be Christians but not really walking in the fullness of God, rather than the ones who claim to be not Christians at all. It's almost like Jesus says in Revelation that He'll spit you, He'll chew you up and spit you out if you're lukewarm, so meaning that the people who are lukewarm really don't know Jesus at all, yet they claim to know Jesus. So they're kind of lying to themselves and lying to people. And what does lukewarm exactly mean? Lukewarm means, I believe, that it's claiming to know Jesus and to follow Jesus, because when you say you're a Christian, it means that you're wholeheartedly following Christ and seeking after His will. And I think lukewarmness is just kind of living this half-life. You know, we have this term, "one foot in the church and one foot in the world." It's maybe professing to be a Christian, but kind of living a double life. And Jesus does see it all, and He does have compassion on the weak, and all He wants is our hearts, completely, 100% of our hearts. And I believe that He He wants to help those who are lukewarm. He doesn't want them to stay where they are. He wants to bring them in fully to the fullness of God. Because once we see the fullness of God, we never really want to go back. Like, our flesh may pull us to go back, but once you see God and the works of God, it's like, "Oh my gosh, I don't want anything else." You know, my spirit longs for God, and so I feel this pull in my spirit each day. My spirit wants God, my flesh wants the world, but the spirit always tramps over the flesh, because He who is in you is greater than He who is in the world. And I read that verse today, and I think that verse is in 1 John. I think it's in like verse 4 or 5? "He who is in you is greater than he who is in the world," where is it? One second. I wrote it down in my notebook. Maybe I didn't write it down. Here's one similar to this. 1 John 3:20 says, "For God is greater than our hearts, and He knows everything." So God is omniscient, omnipresent, He's everywhere and He's all-knowing, and so He knows how we're feeling all the time, and He knows what we're going through. And then I love, oh, here it is, 1 John 4:4. It says, "You dear children are from God and have overcome them, because the one who is in you is greater than the one who is in the world." So when Jesus, when we repent of our sins and believe in Christ and follow Him, His Spirit comes into us, and all of a sudden, we have triumphed. You know, we have victory because of the cross. And so, we want to live that way, and I think that's what Jesus is calling us to do. He didn't come to this world for nothing. He didn't come to this world for us to say, "I'm a Christian." He came to this world for us to truly be free. And we're gonna read a verse about freedom in Christ in a little bit. But mainly, I wanted this Bible study to be centered, that was kind of a side point, but I mainly wanted this study to be centered around just living through pain and hardship and suffering and through loneliness, maybe? And I'm going to, where's my phone? Okay, so I was watching these videos earlier about this girl I found on YouTube. And her YouTube name is Kingdom Servant. And I watched her testimony, and it's so beautiful. It's just the Lord is speaking to her audibly all the time now, and giving her messages to give to YouTube, and I think that's so cool. And so she has a message from God to give to YouTube that she posted in October of 2014. And I'm just gonna read a little bit of it out, and it says, "Blessed are you..." No, it says here, okay, it says, "The true children of God know that this world is not their home. They feel alienated here, alone, like outcasts in a foreign land. Truly I say unto you, your reward is great. Blessed are you when you rely on the power of God to get you through each day. Blessed are you when you mourn. Blessed are you of a contrite spirit. Blessed are the broken-hearted. Blessed are the weary, for they will receive rest." And keep in mind that what God is speaking to her is also biblically backed up, and you always want to make sure of that. Eternal rest, eternal comfort, eternal glory. "Blessed are those who hear my voice. Blessed are those who believe without seeing. Blessed are the meek. Blessed are those who seek God. Blessed are you, you who are not of this world. Blessed are you. Behold, I come quickly, the good shepherd." So to me, you know, hearing this girl, and I'll put the link to her channel down in the description, but hearing her, you know, just speak the word of the Lord is so powerful to me, and hearing God speak through her is so cool. And so, God wants to remind all of us that we are set apart. And so, as Christians, whether you're a Christian or not watching this, when you do become a Christian, you are gonna go through times and periods of loneliness, and you're not going to feel like you fit in. And I kind of feel like that all the time. You don't feel like you fit in, you don't feel like you really belong. And high school is really hard, especially as a Christian, just because you are so set apart from the world. And so, you're not gonna act the way the world does, you're not gonna do the things of the world, because you are set apart from those things. And you have been freed from that sin, you've been freed from that darkness. So I'm gonna illustrate what I see school as, in a Christian perspective. So I'm gonna take one of these candles. I like this one. So take a candle and imagine a very dark corridor, or a dark hallway. And if you have a broad imagination, just kind of add to it what you'd like. Think of something very scary and dark. A dark place. And then think of this candle wandering through... This isn't creepy, okay, this is not meant to seem creepy, but think of this just wandering through the halls. Maybe someone's holding it. And so you're, and then also imagine some dark figures in the hallway as well. So you're seeing movement of people, but only their silhouettes, because they're darkened. And then imagine someone carrying this candle around, and it's one of the only lights in the corridor, except there are a couple others. So every so often, you see a little bit of light walking through. That's how I see, you know, any kind of non-Christian environment. High school, or a workplace, as, I see that as, when you are the Christian, you have the light of Jesus in you. This is not braggadocious, this is not prideful at all, not saying that you have, you know, some awesome power. This is from Christ. You are lit up because of Christ, and you walk through the halls with this proclaimed knowledge of Jesus, and therefore you have light. Now, all the time, you have light with your actions and your love, but you also have light in your speaking and in your boldness and speaking the truth of God. And I believe that it's very hard to have boldness in school. It's very easy to slip into, you know, "I wanna, I wanna just look like everyone else, I wanna be in the crowd," and for me, especially now, being a senior in high school, I feel "get me out of this place" kind of thing. But I have to continually let God remind me that, like, He has stuff for you here, right now, every day. And so, when you do go to these schools, there are very little amounts of Christians now. You are one of the few Christians in these schools, and so God has a lot for you to do. And in one of these, this girl that I showed you from YouTube, this girl, one of the visions that she had, God was telling her, "Go do the work that I've given you." So God has like this epic story for you. And I believe that this epic story that He has for you does include pain and struggle, simply because we are human beings. We have struggle printed on us. You know, ever since the beginning of time, when the fall of man came and evil entered the world, we have struggle everywhere. Every single person has been through some sort of struggle. And it's crazy, because everyone in school is walking around with a struggle. And so you can't, that's why we're not called to judge people, because we get things wrong a lot. I believe that's part of the reason. Is because we're not God, and we don't have the ability to know what someone has been through, what they feel on the inside. So you see, you start to see every person as someone God wants, as His own. And then all of a sudden, you don't see people as just, "Get out of my way, like, I want to live my life, and you people are just annoying, and I don't care about any of you, except my select member of friends." You start to see everybody as someone who needs Jesus. And when you start to see people as people who need God, all of a sudden, you have this passion rising in you for them to know God. And then because of that passion, you're going to have boldness, and you're gonna ask God for the boldness, to speak the words that you need to speak. And I've battled this all through high school, I've battled this struggle of, "How do I speak the word of God?" I tried so hard all the time to speak the word of God, and it just wouldn't come, because I was so afraid. And I really did rely on my own strength a lot during high school. And all of a sudden, you know, my senior year, I just kind of let God do it, and I still struggle with it, but now, opportunities do come to me. And God really does use our actions and our witness. I'm not trying to undermine that, but I believe that we are also called to speak the word of God. That's a very clear statement. And I was reading an article that said, "A lot of people do say that there is like a quote by Saint Francis," I think, or supposedly, that said like, "You know, share the gospel at all times, and when necessary, use words." I do agree with that. I do agree. There's obviously times to be silent and just to love people, but there's also times where God commands us to speak, and I'm pretty sure the article also said that Saint Francis may not have said that, just because he went around everywhere he went, and he spoke the gospel. Whoever said it, I partly agree with the quote and I partly don't, but the bottom line is, Jesus spoke wherever he went, and I believe that we're called to speak wherever we go as well. And so, this Bible study has started to include a lot of different topics, but I do want to try to stay on this path of just like, living as a Christian through pain. And so, one of the things that I see, I was reading this book, The Hiding Place, I talk about that a lot at Bible study. And the woman in the book, her family has been hiding Jews during the Holocaust, and they live in in Holland, and eventually she goes to prison, and eventually she goes to one of the Nazi prison camps, and it's like, the darker her world gets, the stronger God's light shines. And I have quotes by this book in my notes on my phone. And one of them is, let me see, let me see. Come on, I know it's somewhere. Okay, here it is. So it says here, "The blacker the night around us grew, the brighter and truer and more beautiful burned the word of God. Who shall separate us from the love of Christ? Shall tribulation, or distress, or persecution, or famine, or nakedness, or peril, or sword? Nay, in all these things we are more than conquerors through Him that loved us." And I don't know that exact verse, but I will put that in the description as well, because that is an incredible verse. I think it's in 1 or 2 Corinthians, but it's talking about "Nothing can separate us from the love of Christ." And so, if we begin to live each day like, "Nothing can separate us from Christ," and we're called to share the gospel boldly, then each day becomes a new adventure, and we start to not live in fear anymore or anxiety, like I have so many of my days, but we start to live in this freedom of Christ, knowing that even through my pain, even through my suffering, whatever family troubles I'm going through right now, whatever I am going through, I can, I can count it all as suffering for Christ. And I know that Christ will reconcile all things to Himself, He promises me that. And so, even the darkest of situations that I'm going through, He can reconcile to Himself. And so, I've been using that a lot when I pray to Him. I've been saying, "God, reconcile this to yourself." Because if He can reconcile the darkest and most evil of people, of sinners like me and you, to God, a holy and powerful and mighty God, then He can reconcile anything else. And so, we have to have the faith to believe that He will reconcile. And even if it doesn't happen in this life, it will happen in the next. And we will be with Him, we'll be united with Him, and we'll see Him face to face, and then we will have no more tears, no more pain. So each day, hold on to the knowledge that, as a Christian, even if you are suffering in this life, there is a life to come. And here on this earth, God wants to use your suffering. God has used my suffering so much in so many different ways. Just in my small amount of suffering, very, very small in this life, and the hardships that I have faced, God has used my anxiety, my fears, my, my just tight-fisted fears that have just stolen my joy for so long. God has just totally used them. And even family issues that I, you know, I don't really talk about, a Bible study or anything like that, things that my family has gone through and just currently going through, just, you know, upsetting things, just even those things, like God will use, and God can use. And I love that at the beginning of what I read, it says, you know, "Blessed are you," something like, "Blessed are you who rely on Me throughout your day." And so, I would count myself as more blessed if I am struggling, but seeing God more and seeking God more than if I'm just doing fine and just kind of like living my life a little bit separately from Him. So, suffering can actually be such a wonderful thing. It can be something that really matures us in our faith. And I just want to encourage you guys that whatever you guys are going through, like whatever family issue, however dark your life is right now, however lonely it is, however much you feel like what you're going through, no one understands, like, He is here, and He is with you. And He is beside you and inside of you. If you have the Holy Spirit in you, He is living inside of you, and He longs for you to live the life that He has made for you to live. Alright, that was long, so we're gonna go through these a little bit faster. We're gonna flip forward to Jude. It's right after 3 John, Jude, it's just like one page. So we're gonna read Jude, chapter 1, verse 17 to 25. Oh, wait a second. It's entitled "A Call to Persevere." So verse 17 says, "But dear friends, remember what the apostles of our Lord Jesus Christ foretold. They said to you, 'In the last times there will be scoffers who will follow their own ungodly desires. These are the men who divide you, who follow mere natural instincts and do not have the Spirit.'" And verse 20 says, "But you dear friends, build yourselves up in your most holy faith and pray in the Holy Spirit. Keep yourselves in God's love as you wait for the mercy of our Lord Jesus Christ to bring you to eternal life. Be merciful to those who doubt; snatch others from the fire and save them; do others show mercy mixed with fear, hating even the clothing stained by corrupted flesh." So it's saying, "Have no part with corruption, and save anyone you can from the fire." Verse 24, "To him who is able to keep you from falling and to present you before His glorious presence without fault and with great joy, to the only God our Savior be glory, majesty, power, and authority, through Jesus Christ our Lord, before all ages, now and forevermore." Amen. And feel free to, you know, pause this video whenever you feel like you want to reflect on something that I said, or read something else, or just kind of write about it. I encourage writing notes, or writing down your thoughts and questions, so that you can just have more of a connection to what I'm saying, because it's hard to listen to someone talk for like this long. I know, I'm sorry. I wish I had people around me who could add things and say things, but it's just me right now. So, now that we've read Jude, I love that last verse that says, it says, "Through Jesus Christ our Lord, before all ages, now and forevermore." I think we all live our lives with a sense of we just never really have awe for God. A lot of us live our lives without awe for God, and we'll we'll talk about God maybe, and I don't know the extent of, whoever's watching, the extent of your relationship with God, or how how long you've been walking with Him, but I think a lot of us, even walking with Him, tend to fall away a little bit. Like, God never leaves us, but we distance ourselves from God, and so I feel like as we get into the the habit of school, or work, or wherever you are in your life, we lose a sense of awe in God, and I believe that He can restore that in our hearts. And I believe that part of that awe really relates to our, how we interact with other people. You know, when we're in awe of God, and we see just, we feel so much passion for God in our hearts, I believe that we, that kind of carries over to how we see other people. You know, we see other people, "Oh my gosh, you are made by God, and I'm just in awe." And we just, we just become really, really in awe of God, and I believe that's how we were meant to be. My camera's dying. Okay, let's hope that it is sustained. We're gonna flip back to 1 Peter, which is right before 2 Peter, which is right before 1 John. So just go back a little bit, and we're gonna go to 1 Peter, chapter 5, and we're gonna read verse 13 to 16. So 1 Peter, chapter 5, verse 13 to 16. Wait a second, that can't be right. That cannot be right. I did this last week, darn it. Is it 2 Peter? Maybe it's 2 Peter 5? Okay, don't know what that means, but we're gonna go to the next one. We're gonna go to James, which, you're gonna go back a little bit. James is right before 1 Peter. So it's all in the same general area. James, chapter 1, verse 1 to 8. James 1:1-8, it says here, actually, verse 2. "Consider it pure joy, my brothers, whenever you face trials of many kinds, because you know that the testing of your faith develops perseverance. Perseverance must finish its work so that you may be mature and complete, not lacking anything. If any of you lacks wisdom, he should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to him. But when he asks, he must believe and not doubt, because he who doubts is like a wave of the sea, blown and tossed by the wind. That man should not think he will receive anything from the word; he is a double-minded man, unstable in all he does." So it's basically saying, your faith develops perseverance, and persevering in your faith develops your character and hope. And so, all these really cool, good things come out of perseverance in Christ. And so, whatever you are suffering, you can know that there's hope, that it won't be Also, suffering really can give you a different perspective on people who are dealing with the same thing. And you can, for the rest of your life, you'll know what that person has been through, and so anyone who's going through that, you can comfort them in a different way than no one else can, because you've actually been through that. You've walked that path. And so, now we're gonna go to Galatians, chapter 5. So you're gonna go back a little bit more, and back past Philippians, Ephesians, and then you're gonna get to Galatians. We're gonna read chapter 5, and we're just gonna read verse 1, and then go down more. Okay. So Galatians 5, verse 1, says, "It is for freedom that Christ has set us free. Stand firm then, and do not let yourselves be burdened again by a yoke of slavery." So, if we're gonna live our lives as Christians, and if we're gonna claim that Jesus came to this earth, because when you say you're a Christian, you claim that, "Yes, I believe that Jesus came to this earth to set me free from my sin, that I may have truly what is called life." And you believe that you have life because of Christ, and anyone that does not have Christ does not have life. And there's literally a verse that says that too. I think it's in 1 John. I read a lot of 1 John today. So, taking hold of that, that is truly life, and not being deceived by the world of this shallow Christianity, of just maybe going to church, of maybe tithing, or even being a good person, like, don't be deceived by that. That's not Christianity at all. Christianity is knowing Jesus as your Savior, growing with Him, and just being on this huge, amazing, marvelous journey of knowing God, and giving up everything to God, sacrificing everything to God. True Christianity is not safe Christianity or comfortable Christianity. True Christianity is giving up of self to God, just like Jesus did when He was here on this earth. Because if we're gonna call ourselves Christians, we gotta see what's in here, and what's in here is a lot different than what we think Christianity is. So if Jesus has really set us free, it says, "Don't let yourselves be burdened again by a yoke of slavery." So don't let yourselves be burdened, guys. Like, if we have Christ, we don't have to be burdened by anything anymore. And so, we're gonna go down, and we're gonna read verse 16. And I might keep going a little bit. So verse 16 says, "So I say, 'Live by the Spirit,' and you will not gratify the desires of the sinful nature." So you guys can go on to read the rest of the fruits of the Spirit. They're really, really beautiful. And so, those things sprout a lot too during our times of suffering, because we come to the Lord often a lot more. We anytime you just start crying out to the Lord, that's exactly what He wants. He wants just a broken and contrite heart before Him, saying, "Lord, I need you." You know, that's the best place that a human being can be, just bent in humility, saying, "Lord, I need you." And so, the last thing we're gonna read is Psalm 16. So Psalm is like, basically, if you open up to the middle of the Bible, you'll probably get to Psalm or somewhere around there. Let's go to Psalm 16. It's a really, really beautiful chapter here. I'm really hoping my camera doesn't die. I really don't want it to die. Okay. So Psalm 16, it says, "Keep me safe, O God, for in you I take refuge. I said to the Lord, 'You are my Lord, and apart from you I have no good thing. As for the saints who are in the land, they are the glorious ones, and whom is all my delight. The sorrows of those will increase who run after other gods. I will not pour out their libations of blood, or take up their names on my lips. Lord, you have assigned me my portion and my cup; you have made my lot secure. The boundary lines have fallen for me in pleasant places; surely I have a delightful inheritance." Verse 7, "I will praise the Lord who counsels me, even at night my heart instructs me. I have set the Lord always before me, because He is at my right hand; I will not be shaken." That's a verse that I read a lot, going through a lot of times of darkness, because it just spoke to me so much, "Even at night my heart instructs me." So verse 9 says, "Therefore my heart is glad, and my tongue rejoices; my body also will rest secure, because you will not abandon me to the grave, and nor will you let your holy one see decay. You have made known to me the path of life; you will fill me with joy in your presence, and with eternal pleasures at your right hand." So I think that's just the most encouraging verse. It's just, "Even at night my heart instructs me, you won't abandon me to decay. You will be with me, you will lead me forth." And there's another verse, I think it's a Psalm, and it said, "You will be, like, led for, I'll be led forth in the hills, and the hills and the mountains will rejoice before me," and just God's promise of peace to you, that's what it is. And truly, we can be happy sometimes, but our emotions go so up and down, but real, true joy comes from Jesus, and we can have joy whenever, you know? And so, this was kind of a really scatterbrained video, so hopefully next time I can hone down a little more on like what I'm trying to say, but I hope that you guys enjoyed it and got something out of it. I would continue reading more of 1 John and more of the verses that I told you guys. Okay, this is really sad. I tried to make the end of this video, because the storage to my camera, it like, my camera ran out of storage. And so, I tried to make this video, I was gonna be like, "Okay, I'll make it another two to three minutes, talking about whatever." It was nine more minutes, guys. I don't want to make you sit through that. It's already been like a It was nine more minutes, guys. I don't wanna make you sit through that. It's already been like a twenty-five minute video. So really quickly, I'm just gonna run through a couple of recommendations that I have. And lastly, I wanted to say, just continue pursuing God. He will not disappoint. Please let me know if you guys ever wanna talk about anything, if you wanna meet for coffee, if you wanna text me, if you know me personally, um, social media, anything like that, just please let me know if you need prayer or you wanna talk or you have questions or you just wanna be friends. I'd love to be friends. And, um, just keep pursuing God, because he is, he's a holy God and he wants all of your heart. And so just pray to him that you are not living a lukewarm life, that you're not living a life of shadows kind of, but living a full life in the light so that he can use you, like the candle example that I was talking about earlier. And so one of the books I wanted to recommend is Jesus Prom by, um, John Wiess. There's a really, I've only read like ten or eleven pages. Honestly, the name, I know it's very cheesy, but it's a beautiful book and, uh, one of the stories in the book is about the, the author lived in Haiti at one point and there was a blind man he saw on the street. And the blind man was begging and the blind man's legs were broken because his family had broken his legs when he was little to, to beg and bring in money for the family. And so he gave him food and the man told him the story and then a few years later he saw this man in a wheelchair and the man wanted to pray for him and he said, heavenly father, let this man, my brother, see you the way I see you. And this was the blind man that he encountered years ago on the road. So just like these really beautiful stories like that are in this book and it's about just loving God's people the way that he meant for us to love them. And then the Jesus Storybook Bible is meant for children, but honestly, it's such a beautiful book. I would recommend it to anyone. And we're called to take in, um, the kingdom of heaven, not in a childish way, but in a childlike way. And we're called to see God in a childlike way. Just like how children just believe and don't, don't doubt. And so this book is beautiful. It's got beautiful illustrations. Yes, it's meant for children, but honestly, it's just beautiful and so pure and so fresh and innocent. And I love it. Like one of the pages, one of the pages here, um, is of Jesus coming out of the water when the Holy Spirit descends on him. Just like illustrations like this are just so, so beautiful to me. Um, so I recommend this, the Jesus Storybook Bible. And then I also recommend, these are just a few of the notebooks that I've written in the past few years. Um, this is the one I'm currently on, but I really recommend you guys to write in a notebook. Um, it really helps me when I'm distracted. It allows me to look back on what I was going through a year ago, a month ago, two years ago now, and it's just built up and it's so beautiful seeing God answer prayer and also I see the way that he's matured me in my notebooks. So I just wanna encourage you guys that God is good, God is real, he's one hundred percent with us and I want you guys to experience him the way that he intended for you to experience him. So I love you all and again, please let me know if you need anything.